I'd like to call the January 10th meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Dartmouth School Committee meeting for January 10th. For the record, I would like to state that Ms. Kathleen Amaral will be participating remotely. Ms. Gunther, can we have a roll call, please?
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Mary Waite.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
John Noons.
Yep.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to remind members of the audience to please signal or turn down your cellphone, turn off the sound so that we do not have any disturbances during this meeting. I'm sort of floundering because I know that this is going to be shown on DCTV, but I forgot it's not written in my notes anymore and I can't remember, but it's going to be shown.
It's usually shown.
Mr. Noons has it. While you look for that, I'm going to say you can also access this via livestream, YouTube, DHS TV Media.
The meeting is rebroadcast on DCTV Channel 9 on Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 p.m., Friday at 6:00, Saturday at 8:00, and Sunday at 2:00, and then on DCTV Channel 18 on Monday and Saturday at 12:00 noon and Thursday at 3:00 p.m. And there are some other times that it pops in there and we thank them for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Noons. I appreciate that.
No problem.
So, we're going to start the evening. We've allotted 10 minutes for public comment. If anyone would like to comment on an item that is on our agenda this evening, I would ask for you to come up to the microphone here. Please state your name and share your thoughts with us.
Hello, I am Lynn Turner. I am a parent to two kids in the public school system. One is in the middle school and one in the high school. I also have three stepchildren that went through the school system. They are young adults. I am, this is my first time speaking at school board meetings. I am very grateful and thankful to be here. I did write a letter of concern at the beginning of the school year asking for it to be read and it wasn't, so I'm just very glad to have a voice and I'm grateful that you guys have opened it up. Thank you. I hope we continue to have a voice. I guess I want to, I'm very grateful also to the wonderful teachers that touched my kids' lives and other kids' lives in Dartmouth and also to the staff. But I do have some concerns regarding, and one of them is, that I want to speak on is discrimination and segregation. I feel that the vaccine status push that is, you know, everybody should be vaccinated by Desi saying that, you know, when we reach 80% status, I think it's just around the corner, right, that maybe we can open it up so that masks cannot have to be worn and maybe that's by the vaccinated. But I fear that that will create discrimination and segregation where there's a privilege afforded to one group of students and not to all of the students. I think that, you know, mask choice could be implemented instead at that point if it comes down to that. I know that both vaccinated and unvaccinated are carrying COVID right now and sharing COVID right now, so I doubt that's going to happen. But I think that it's important not to have one group over another group when you're dealing with kids in the same school. And I do have a book that I love and I was an elementary school teacher. And it is a Dr. Seuss book called The Sneetches and I have two pages that I just wanted to share. And it reminds me of the times and what's going on these days with the vaccinated and unvaccinated status. And it is a story about assigning more value and privileges to certain sneetches and not other sneetches and they are awarded stars on their bellies to say you are more special and you get better treatment. And it says, "When the star-bellied sneetches had Frankfurt or roasts or picnics or parties or marshmallow toasts, they never invited the plain-bellyed sneetches. They left them out cold in the dark on the beaches. They kept them away, never let them come near, and that's how they treated them year after year." And at the end, they decide after they've spent lots of money putting stars on and off of their bellies to try to be special. At the end of the story, but Mr. McBean was quite wrong. I'm quite happy to say that the sneetches got quite, really, got really quite smart on that day, that the day they decided that sneetches are sneetches and no kind of sneetch is the best on the beaches. That day, all the sneetches forgot about stars and whether or not they had one on bars. So I just really want to make sure that all kids are treated equally and not discriminated against. So that is my, yeah, that is what I'll speak on today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll invite anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak and I will remind that our audience members that public comment is typically restricted to items that are under consider, under consideration on the agenda. I appreciate your comments. We did read the letter that you sent to us. All public comment that's been sent to Ms. Gunther has been forwarded to all of us. But we generally speaking reserve public comment for items that are on our agenda for the evening. If anyone else would like to comment on something about some item on the agenda for the evening, I would welcome you up and to share your name and to share your thoughts. Please come up to the microphone, state your name, and you may ask a question.
My name is Jeannie Tripp and I no longer have any students in any of the Dartmouth schools. My question is, how would we go about getting something added to your agenda so that we could have open discussion about it and go through your process properly?
So, generally speaking, the school committee establishes the agenda. There is actually, under Massachusetts law, no right to public comment at public meetings. It is at the discretion of the school committee about whether to allow public comment. We do and we allow public comment on the items that are under consideration. Right now, there is no discussion of the mask mandate or the vaccine mandate because those are not in our power, right? The Commissioner of Education has extended the mask mandate through the end of February. If at some point in time, there is a discussion to be had about whether to continue or discontinue mask policies, that will be on our agenda and that will be the appropriate time to have that conversation. But right now, that is not under our control, therefore it's not on our agenda.
So, in theory, it would be something that when the state Department of Education or so on brings it up, then you would take that matter up again in public at a meeting? Or?
Yes, correct. And I would, you know, I don't, we don't generally speaking do back and forth during public comment, but because some people have questions about how that worked, I'm okay with that. Generally speaking, the way public comment works is that there's an item on the agenda and we hear all of the public comments, we take that under consideration, and then when we move into the agenda, we discuss it then. We don't normally have questions or back and forth, but I do think it's important to sort of explain how that works.
To understand the format, for those of us, like I've just started attending and it's just out of respect for the board and for the system that you have in place, that we obviously want to follow proper protocol and approach you professionally. Okay? Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
If there's any other public comment on any of the items on our agenda, you're welcome to come to the meeting, state your name and share your thoughts. All right. Having no other takers, I will entertain a motion for approval of the regular session minutes for December 13th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Mr. Oliver. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing nominated, we have a roll call, please, Ms. Gunther.
Shannon Jenkins.
Aye.
Mary Waite.
I'd stand.
Kathleen Amaral.
Yes.
John Noons.
Yes.
Chris Oliver.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. All right, next on our agenda is our student representative report. Evan Garcia is here with us. He's going to share with us the coming, what's going on at Dartmouth High.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I hope that everyone had a wonderful winter break. This is our first school committee meeting of the year and I am proud to report that Dartmouth High School is working hard to make 2022 a success. Since our last meeting, many things have happened here at DHS. In December, our band, strings and chorus held the annual Pops Holiday Concert. As with everything put on by the music department, it was a great event. Additionally, nine students competed in the English Department's Poetry Out Loud Event. Congratulations to Lauren Lima who won this competition and to everyone else who participated. This event can be streamed on DHS TV Media's YouTube page. Our clubs here at the high school have hosted many events. These include Unified Bowling, which has now returned to Wonder Bowl, the Esports Club, which recently created an esports room here at the high school, the Debate Club, which will be competing in its first competition this Saturday, Indoor Percussion, which is preparing for competitions set to occur later this month, Best Buddies, which held two karaoke events during Pace in December, providing students with and without disabilities the opportunity to hang out and sing together during the school day, the DHS Theater Company, which is hosting auditions for the spring show, Shrek, this week, and of course DHS TV Media, which is broadcasting this meeting and has aired events ranging from poetry out loud to our school singing competition. On the athletics front, winter sports have been temporarily paused over the last week, but they will resume in games and practices later this week. Our hockey team actually has a really big game this Friday at 3:45 facing ORR at the Dunkin' Donuts Center in Providence, so, you know, good luck to them. I really hope they win, that will be fun to watch. And finally, many of our fall athletes have also been highlighted on the Standard Times' Super Team and All-Stars list. So, thank you, and that kind of concludes my update for this meeting.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Evan?
Just thank you, Evan. You articulate things extremely well, you're very well spoken, and I appreciate the high-level overview that you give of what's happening at the high school.
So I told Evan that I'm going to have a question for him because the next item on our agenda is about student representation to the school committee. And we've been having a discussion and I thought it might be good to hear Evan's opinion on this issue. So, under mass general law, the high school is supposed to elect a five-member student committee and then that committee is supposed to send one, their chairperson, as a student representative to the school committee. And that person would sort of sit at the table for our entire meetings as opposed to just doing a report, which would allow them to give some input on items on our agenda. So, for instance, later this evening, we are talking about the school calendar for next year, right? And so if we had a representative serving in that capacity, they'd be able to provide us our input on what they think about the school calendar and any sort of thing that we discuss. So I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that. It is going to be, I think, a big time commitment. We meet every third Monday about for an hour, hour and a half, two hours. Do you think that's a good idea? Would you, do you think students would be interested in participating? Just any sort of thoughts you might have on that would be appreciated.
Yeah, so I think that's a really interesting opportunity. I mean, I'm graduating this year, so it doesn't really apply to me as much, but I know if I was younger, I definitely want to do that. I think that's such a cool opportunity for, you know, there's so many students interested in government and in education and it gives them a voice that, you know, they otherwise wouldn't have had. It's very similar, I think, to, to use the Student Advisory Committee, to the current process of electing the student representative, because I was elected by the Student Council. So I think you could also kind of factor in, like, you could probably say that the Student Advisory Committee is made up of the top five, you know, like, Student Council candidates with the highest votes.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions they might want to ask Evan about that issue before we get into it?
I guess, you know, I will follow up, Evan. You know, do you feel that there's, I want to think of a way to articulate this, because I think part of what we're hoping to get from our student representative is a voice that we may not be hearing and information that we might not be hearing is something that's coming to us as a board and maybe even the administrators aren't hearing. Do you feel that conversations happen within the student body that aren't being, that aren't being conveyed properly to an event? I mean, let me, I'm trying to think of how to say this. I guess, do you feel like there's adequate communication between students and the faculty and administration as to how the school is running and are we aware of student emotions and feelings?
I think so, yes. I know personally, when I give my little spiel before each meeting, I always try to think not just of, you know, what's submitted to me based on, you know, what's in the calendar, but also the events that I've done personally and what I know is going on around the school. I think our administration does a great job of always trying to listen to students. We have a Student Council that's always listened to. We have a couple of other outlets. I know Mr. Tebow and I have a question, he's always there to help.
That's good.
And respond to my emails or anything I might have. I think in this time, especially with social media and with all of these different things happening in our society, students are more involved than ever, so I think it would be really great to have this more formalized student representative position.
Fabulous. Thank you. Other questions for Evan?
Thank you.
So that having been said, you're welcome to stay, you're welcome to go, whatever meets your needs best, Evan, but we definitely appreciate your report and hearing your thoughts.
Yeah, I do have quite a bit of homework. Maybe one time I'll take it from you.
All right, that would be great. Thanks, Evan.
I think you have to talk to your teachers and say, listen, I've got a commitment, you know, two weeks from tonight, tonight, I've got a school committee, school committee meeting, you know, so.
No homework that night.
That is my homework.
That type of deal.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Evan. Have a good night.
You too.
All right, so that gets us to our one item under old business, which is the student representation to the school committee. And I know that we had put that off because I know Ms. Waite had some ideas and wanted to be part of that conversation, but now that we're all here, you know, I'd like to hear your thoughts about sort of moving forward this, enrolling this out in the spring and ultimately, I think what we could do is to just follow the timeline in, that's established in law, that they will be elected in the spring and then by June, they elect the chairperson who would then start attending meetings. That would seem to work best to me, right? Or, but we could move that forward earlier. I'd be interested in hearing what you all think about this.
Dr. Jenkins, you know, when they mentioned, when Evan just mentioned the Student Advisory Council, I'm wondering what their role is and would this, you know, replicate, is that just, you know, focused solely on the high school and high school issues? Like, so to that point, with that same group, I mean, it does seem that those would be, I'll ask, you know, Dr. Gifford, what do those students discuss within their, within that council?
Well, I also want to be clear, though, that the law states that there's only five members.
Right.
So I don't think that would work because I think the Student Advisory Council is larger than that.
No, I don't, I'm not saying like bring them over as a whole. I'm just kind of curious about what issues they speak to and would they be replicated here or would they be, you know, represented as well? So what does the Student Advisory Council do?
Well, I think, you know, they, they speak with the principal, they speak with the admin, et cetera, about, could be, like you said, the parking fees, for example, things that affect them personally or as a group. But also, I think if you were going to do this, it might be nice to have folks not just elected from that group.
Right, right.
But from all of the classes, because as we know, the classes also have a body that meets together to discuss things about their class, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Oliver, did you want to share your thoughts?
Sure. I, you know, personally, I think we should be moving forward with this. I think one way or the other, it needs to happen. I think, you know, I think it would be an asset to have a student body member on, sitting with us at these meetings, just, just to give us their, the students' perspective and their feedback. You know, looking, I have the law in front, the section up in front of me right now and no, I think, you know, let's, my opinion is let's move forward with this. It's my, looking at this, it sounds like one of the things that they bring up is the consideration that the school committee may designate a student outreach coordinator. So that, you know, that's something that I think we should consider just to make sure that they're, that student is aware of what's going on. But I'm okay with that time, that timeframe. That was actually going to be my first question, is what are we looking at for a timeframe? But I think that's, I think that's reasonable. The only, we got to at least try it and then, you know, let's see what happens as far as commitments from students and understanding what the time commitment is, so. That's all I have.
Thanks. You know, and I was thinking along that lines of if we do do that timeline where they would elect and it would be prior to the first day of June in that school year, that we could name a student outreach coordinator now. I'm going to look out of the corner of my eye at Mary, Ms. Waite, perhaps, maybe, because I think one of the things we talked about was sort of setting up some expectations and so that might give us this time in the spring to sort of maybe set something up like that, right? So that students then know what they're getting into, what they're supposed to do and then we can present that to them, you know, in, you know, in May or whatever. So that gives us some time to develop that and maybe we could work with the high school administration to sort of set that up. Ms. Amaral, did you have any thoughts and then I'll go to Mr. Noons.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, no, I, similar to what Chris just mentioned, I think it's something that we definitely, I'm in support to move forward with. I think that in less formal ways over the years, we had some, some changes made based on that student voice and positive changes and I think it's important that we engage them in this way. And I'm okay with the timeline, I'm not really invested in any of those sorts of details, but I do look forward to us moving forward with this hopefully sooner than later.
Thank you. Mr. Noons, your thoughts?
Yeah, got a few. I just want to make sure that this doesn't be, this isn't a popularity contest, okay? That, as Evan said, yeah, there are a lot of, I would assume there are, as he said, a lot of students that are, you know, interested in, you know, government and how government works and that type of deal, so, which is, which is fine, but I, you know, this is not going to be a job to take lightly, okay? I mean, if you're going to make this commitment, then you're going to have to be here. You know, you're almost going to have to have a chairman and a vice chair for discussion purposes that if one of the, you know, the chairman can't be here, that type of deal, then, you know, one of the other four, one of the other four members, you know, has got to step up and is going to have to be here, type of deal. You know, are these one-year terms? The law doesn't say that. As I read this, it doesn't say how long the terms are.
I did see that, hold on. First of June in each year. Who shall serve a term, who shall serve for a term of one year.
Of one year.
So that's.
But that's the chairman.
Chairperson.
The chairperson.
Yes. And again, we can set that up, but I think we would do elections every year.
Okay, that, that type of deal, okay? Are we going to have at least one? We've got four classes, are we going to have one from each class? Which means you end up with three or four in June and then you've got to get the freshman class in in September and get a member from that, that class to be on that board. So that you have a well-rounded representation.
You're saying every year, Mr. Noons? You're saying throughout the course of one year? What do you, tell me, I understand.
In other words, if we have these elect, the way we're talking right now, we're going to have these elections in, or the students are going to have some type of a discussion come March or April. Okay? So they're going to pick five members, okay? What happens if two of them are seniors? Then they're, you know, come June 6th, you know, 10th, whenever graduation is, they're no longer here. So that means come September, we've got to find two other represent, at least then now we'll have the freshman class in and we could possibly get someone from the freshman class.
I think it would make sense, though, that we could, it might make sense to not have representation from the freshman class because they're just starting out, it's not, they don't know the ropes. But you could do one.
I don't want somebody coming back and saying that we're not, we're not, we're excluding a class.
We could do, you could do one from the, at the end of the year when we're having elections, one from the freshman class, two from the sophomore class, two from the junior class.
Whatever, you know.
But I think those are parameters that we can establish and I think it might make sense for us to do that, working with the school administration on some of that. Mr. Oliver, you're going to share your thoughts.
Yeah, I just wanted to just, kind of just respond to Mr. Noons. I think, you know, this is supposed to be happening across the 300-something school districts across the state, so I don't think we're, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. This got to be through MASs. I'm sure some of Dr. Gifford's colleagues have, have this. I know in the school district I'm currently in, I had the opportunity to speak at a, at a school committee meeting last week and they have a student rep that did a very, very well job of presenting to the school committee and sharing their feedback to the committee. So I think, I think it's good and I don't think we need to really go, I can, I understand what you're saying and I hear, you know, we don't want to be, what about this? How come the committee didn't do this? But I think there's, whether it's through MASs or whether it's through just speaking to other school committees that, you know, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel on this.
No, no, and I'm not, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel. I'm just, you know, again, the number of years that I've been here, we've had student representatives that have, at the time, would spend the whole meeting here, okay? And they would, literally no disrespect, we bumps on the log. You ask them a question and you get a deer in a headlight look. So, somebody that, you know, this is, this is a serious job.
Absolutely.
If they were to do it, you know, they got to jump in with both feet. He or she is going to have to jump in with both feet.
Right.
So that's, that's all I'm saying.
No, certainly a good point.
So I can follow up. I know that Tracy Novick from MASs is who I found out about this from. I can follow up with her to see, I think they're doing this in Worcester and if you want to ask MASs, but I can do that follow-up to see if there's any sort of procedures or guidelines that we could copy.
Because I had spoken with, I had spoken with Glenn, you know, via MASs too and I didn't, there, at that point, it was a very loose framework when I was speaking with him. I didn't have a lot of, you know, feedback. There are some parameters online within the mask handbook, again, but they're pretty broad and pretty in line with what we're doing, so I don't think it's actually, I don't see the documents and the guidance that's matching this kind of heightened council that we're thinking of, so.
I, yeah, I know, I just know that.
Like I said, I think it seems to be new and still forming, so.
Tracy's on the Worcester School Committee.
Now I know.
And they, they actually have a student representative who's a full participant. So I can ask.
That would be great.
Her for what their procedures are in Worcester for how they.
Some type of a policy or.
Yep. Practice, yeah. So I'll look into that. I think it seems to be, I don't think we need to make a motion right now, but it seems to me to be the sense of the committee that we want to move forward to this. We're going to bring forward maybe a sort of policy guidance to figure out how to do this and then we'll, we'll do that. The one question I have is.
I know in, in the school district I'm currently in, I had the opportunity to, um, speak at a, at a school committee meeting last week. And they have a, a student rep, um, that did a very, uh, very well job of, of presenting to the school committee and, and sharing their feedback to the committee. So I, I think, I think it's good and I, I don't think we need to really go, I can, I understand what you're saying. And I hear, you know, we don't want to be, what about this? How come the committee didn't do this? But I think there's, whether it's through MASC or whether it's through just speaking, um, to other school committees that, you know, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel on this.
No, no, and I'm not, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel. I'm just, you know, again, this number of years that I've been here, we've had student representatives that have, at the time, would spend the whole meeting here, okay? And they would, literally no disrespect, we bumps on the log. You ask them a question and you get a deer in a headlight look. So, somebody that, you know, this is, this is a serious job.
Absolutely.
Do it. You, you know, you, they got to jump in with both feet. He or she is going to have to jump in with both feet.
Right.
So that's, that's all I'm saying.
No, it's certainly a good point.
So I can follow up. I know that Tracy Novick from MASC is who I found out about this from. I can follow up with her to see, um, I think they're doing this in Worcester and if you want to ask MASSS. But I can do that follow-up to see if there's any sort of procedures or guidelines that we could copy.
Cause I had spoken with, um, I, I had spoken with Glenn, you know, via MASC too. And I didn't, there, at that point, it was a very loose framework when I was speaking with him. I didn't have a lot of, you know, feedback. There, there are some parameters online within the, the Mass Handbook. Again, but they're pretty broad and pretty in line with what we're doing. So I don't think it's actually, I don't see the documents and the guidance that's matching this kind of heightened council that we're thinking of. So I'm hoping, so like you said, I think it seems to be new and still forming, so.
Tracy's on the Worcester School Committee.
Now I know, I'm aware.
And they, they actually have a student representative who's a full participant. So I can ask.
That would be great.
Her for what their procedures are in, in Worcester for how they.
That would be helpful.
Policy or?
Yep, practice, yeah. So I'll, I'll look into that. I think it seems to be, I don't think we need to make a motion right now. But it seems to me to be the sense of the committee that we want to move forward to this. We're going to bring forward maybe a sort of policy guidance to figure out how to do this and, and then we'll, we'll do that. The one question I have is, it does give us the ability to name a student outreach coordinator. Do we want to do that? Would anybody be willing to do that? Ms. Wade, would you be willing to do that?
Can you define though, what will we anticipate?
It says a school committee may designate a student outreach coordinator for the purpose of ensuring the establishment of a student advisory committee and regularly informing the advisory committee of the school committee's agenda.
Yep.
So I think to the first part, um, you know, we can get some of those sample policies and then you could maybe work with, with Ross.
Ross, that would be great.
Some of the administration. Um, do we want to do a motion to appoint, designate Mary as a student outreach coordinator? Are we okay with her volunteering for that?
I'm fine.
All right. So thank you, Ms. Wade. I appreciate that. And so we can talk, but let's, I'll do some outreach to MASC and then we'll keep moving that and we'll bring it back to the committee once we have a more fully formed policy. All right, excellent. So moving on to the next item on our agenda is new business. We have our Dartmouth representatives to the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School School Committee. Dr. Cindy Marlin, Dr. Shea, I'd like to invite you to come on up and sit up here and we can have a conversation and, um, some questions.
Thank you very much for inviting us.
Thank you for coming. Um, you know, I think, uh, one of the things we really just want to do is to ensure that the lines of communication are kept open so that we have you, you know, come in a couple of times a year, maybe, just for us to, to just talk and stay up sort of on issues, um, questions, but just to have a conversation.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah. So I think, um, I'm going to open it up. I think, um, some of our committees maybe, you know, just do a little bit of a question and answer, have some conversation. I know some of the committee members had some questions for, for you all. So does anybody want to start? Mr. Nunes, can I start with you?
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Watson. Nice to see you as always, sir. Thank you for being here, Mr. Shea, Dr. Marlin. A couple of, a couple of things that I had, and I had the good fortune of running into, uh, Mr. Shea just before the holidays. So he's a little familiar with what I'm about to, about to talk about. But one of the, one of the things, uh, you know, my wife hates it because I just channel surf, type of deal. And I'll pop across the New Bedford Voke, uh, school committee meeting. So I'll kind of listen in sometimes, depending what's going on and such. But in all seriousness, the audio, I can't hear. There's, there's a very, it, it's very weak, you know. It, it, you almost, you know, I've got to put the volume up very loud on my television and then every once in a while it kicks in and, you know, I get my eardrums blasted. So if you could, you know, kind of check on that, only because, you know, it is in my, at, at least on my TVs. I don't know if anybody else has said anything to, to that to you. And, uh, one of the other questions I had, and, you know, you were kind enough to, uh, to, to get is the minutes. And I just, you know, with all due respect, found them to be a little thin, type of deal. And, and by that, I mean, there were some things there, you know, it would say, um, you're going to approve policies. Well, yeah, we all have policies and everything else, but it's like, and I'm going to make an assumption that they probably all kind of run in the same format, you know, with MASC, um, and, and such. But it'll say you're going to approve policies, A, A, or first readings or whatever of, you know, A, 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 B, B, A, B, C, that type, that type of deal. But no notation as to what they're for, type of, type of deal. So now I've either got to just say, okay, the heck with it, or go trying to find my policy book and say, okay, so what's A, 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 B, that type of deal. So I know that, that, that you're approving.
Can I, I want to amplify Mr. Nunes's comments. I think if you look at Ms. Gunther's minutes, Mr. Shea, you're probably familiar with them. You can tell exactly who said what and when and what the context of the debate was. Um, I think to sort of amplify both of Mr. Nunes's comments, it's difficult if you want to stay informed about what's going on in the school committee, the New Bedford School Committee, right? Cause you can't hear and the minutes don't explain what you didn't hear. And so I think it would be helpful to us particularly, but also to the general public, if there was more details in the minutes so that people could see, like, again, like, I, I know here that, like, I don't know, Mr. Oliver asked about, I think playground, no, Mr. Oliver asked about the cost of repairs to the high school roof, right? We're going over the budget. Kate has listed every single thing that we asked about. And so you can see that, that's very transparent. And I think it's helpful just for the public to know what's going on. And so I think we would appreciate that. I don't, sorry to interrupt, but I really want to reinforce what you're saying there, Mr. Nunes.
Yeah, no, I just, you know, sometime, you know, sometimes less is not more, no disrespect.
No, no, I, I, if I speak too softly, let me know. Usually I don't have that problem. The audio, we, I will look into. We, we've been working on that for the last few, few months, I guess. Um, trying to get the right setting. It's a big room, but we thought we had it fixed, but this is the first time I've hearing that it's not. So I, I'll get this back and Mr. Superintendent Watson is here, but I will make my notes on that and make sure that we tie to address that audio.
No, I don't, I, let me just stop you there for a second, sir, is the fact that, you know, I, if you met in December, I haven't seen your December meeting, so I haven't, but I'm going back through, at least through your November meeting, was the last time I saw a meeting.
Yeah, December, we have a meeting tomorrow night, so our December ones will be voted on tomorrow night.
Yeah.
So, but, but I'm talking about the audio right now.
That's what I'm talking about too, is the audio.
Okay.
Meeting, you know, I have, if you had a meeting in December, I haven't seen that one on TV yet.
Okay.
So, you know, the November meeting's the last one I caught when it was very weak.
Okay, but we'll, we'll definitely look into it. I, I think the, the minutes itself, and I can explain to what our direction was. And I remember a few years ago, and it might have been even when I was a superintendent, because it was been a number of years ago where I met with the MASC. And we met with the chair, and I can't remember who the chair was at the time, to talk about minutes. And basically, we were told that, again, the minutes are there for record, for a vote taken. Now, you mentioned we have letters, but we didn't have anything. And I just checked that December one. It is listed, but I have not gone back. But if we're not listing the name or what we're talking about, that is absolutely wrong. And I will just, I'll address that. But usually it's XYZ talks about, you know, admissions. And then, so tell you what it is. And the vote was told to me was that sometimes less is, is better because sometimes if you're talking about it will, it may, it should, whatever, what was the vote? Now, the vote, we have eight members on our school committee.
Yeah.
You have to have five. So it would be, was it four to six, or four to five, no, four to four or five to three? So we do have that recorded as a record. So in our minutes, it was expressed, expressed to us that maybe go that route. Now, this is probably the first time that it has been brought to me as a school committee member or superintendent's. Maybe we, we think about considering more. And I'll bring this back to the full board.
Sure.
We have a meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
And I, I'll mention that to them, but it was kind of a, an intentional way of keeping the minutes short so people could see, okay, there was a vote last night on transfer students and they got defeated. Okay, so that was the call. And, and sometimes we've had a few people call up to, they couldn't attend the meeting, they wanted more information, we would talk to them about it. But nobody's ever came in and asked for minutes before and nobody's ever said, you know, no, no. So I'm listening. I will bring that back and let, let us know, talk about it as ourself. But that's why it was done that way. It was done because MASC at that time said, just make sure you can go back four, five years from now and what was the vote on this issue? And it has to be there with the name and the number. And as you said, now, which I forgot because when I was on board, it wasn't that way. The, everybody had different numbers. And now all of a sudden the state is, is narrowing down, which is fantastic.
Yeah.
But we still should clarify everything we're talking about on the vote that was taken. And I'll make sure that happens.
Thank you, sir.
I, can I just, I want to follow up on that real quick, Mr. Nunes.
Yeah.
If you want to follow up on that, go, but I, I want to stay on the minutes for a minute.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else on the minutes? Okay.
No.
I, I know, I'm not, I, I think maybe this is pre both of your appointment. I know we've had this conversation before and we've asked for the minutes and we've asked for more detail on the minutes. I think that was before either of you were appointed. And so I'm not saying this, I don't want to criticize either of you, but I do think it's a recurring, we have had a recurring preference for more detail in the minutes. And we're hopeful that as your, as our representatives, Dartmouth representatives to the school committee, that you will convey that that is our preference. Because we, this is not the first time in my recollection that we have asked for this. Um, and over the years, we have not regularly, if, if it weren't for Mr. Nunes reminding me on this, um, I don't think we would have gotten the minutes. Um, thank you for that, Mr. Nunes. And we also don't get a lot of detail on that. And so I think as part of our relationship, it has to, we have to be able to see what's going on in the meetings. And we can't right now unless we watch, which, you know, people have family, they have kids, they have jobs. That can be hard to do. So the meeting minutes can be, um, a way to, to figure out what's going on. And so I hope, I, I know, again, this is not you, but I think, I would hope that this time, that maybe there'd be some taking that into consideration because it is something that has been stated previously. Sorry, I just wanted to stay on the minutes. Now, you had a.
Well, I think just to answer your question, no, the statement. If, after we talk about this tomorrow night, I'm not saying the next day, but shortly, I will begin back to you as chair of it to, to say what we discussed last night. We have a meeting, which I set up now with the town administrator, because that's who all the, our information of our attendance goes to and all that at the end of the year. And, you know, and, and we try to at least find out what he or she wants. So that is something that we'll talk about too. But I will get back to you and not just say it's going into a cyberspace. So yes, we decided to lengthen it. No, we're not. Here's a reason, but I will get back to you on it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Oliver?
Before Mr. Nunes picks up a different, different topic, I was just, something I'm thinking about with, you know, with, uh, Mr. Shea and Dr. Marlin, uh, Dr. Marlin being fairly new and then having a new superintendent at Voke. Maybe it would be helpful since, according to the charter, right, I believe it's the town, this is all through the town charter, that the school committee, the select board and the town moderator appoints, or is it just the school committee and?
It's the, the school committee, the moderator.
I was right.
And it's the chairman of the school committee, the town moderator and chairman of the board of select.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Um, and since I've been on, it's typically the full committee that, that takes it to a vote. And then the, the chairperson votes on behalf of the, of the Dartmouth School Committee. But maybe it would be helpful if there was more, just email correspondence between our, our Dartmouth reps and maybe just the chair and, you know, or the chair and the vice chair or just, just more correspondence from committee to committee. Um, I, you know, I, I'm looking forward to, um, you know, having a new administration on board. You know, I, I think we, you know, I think at the end of the day, I, I just think communication has been an, an ongoing, and it goes right back to the note, to the minutes. It's communication, just an ongoing concern amongst at least some of the, this school committee as well as, you know, ju- just hearing it out and about on social media and whatnot. So just maybe increasing that dialogue between our reps and us. And whether that's through better email communications or, um, you know, just coming here quarterly or biannual, semi-annually. I think that would just be a huge help because, you know, at the end of the day, these are all our students, um, you know, that we're all looking out for.
All right, Mr. Nunes, we keep interrupting you.
That's fine.
But I think we have a lot of the same conver, same, same questions. So rather than do the same question four times, we can stay on a subject.
No, that's fine. No, no.
Do you have another question or comment?
No, the only other, the only, we would, I was just going to ask for, uh, for, uh, you know, Mr. Shea or Dr. Marlin to, and we can get to that after, other, other members have, of course, about the new, uh, Voke admission policy, that's all. So that's.
Okay, why don't we save that and then we'll see if there's some other questions.
And I am absolutely fine with that, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to wait to come around to the admissions policy. Mr. Oliver, you have questions, comments?
I really don't have any specific, uh, questions or, or, you know, or comments. Like I said, I actually had the opportunity when, uh, Mr. Watson sent out the invite over the, I believe it was last spring or over the summer, I, I did have a, a sit-down in person with Mr. Watson. We had a, we had a very good conversation. Um, you know, I'm looking forward to some of the, uh, some of the initiatives that he's, um, looking into. You know, I have two daughters. I've said this before. One graduated from New Bedford Voke. The other one is a sophomore at Dartmouth High School right now. And, um, at the end of the day, I, we're all, you know, I, I, there's a path for every single student. Um, and, uh, I just think that Voke is a very, it's an exceptional school. Um, it's known in the state. But certainly, we, there's always room for improvement. And from, from my point of view, I would really just love to see, you know, whether it's more invitations to, to the committee, to, to the Dartmouth School Committee, to, to stop I Voke and Torrit, um, hear about new initiatives. And then just sharing just the, the, whether it's quarterly or semi-annually, um, some, a high-level report from our, from our pointies, um, I think that would go a long way towards my, my, you know, my concern around communication. So if I had to just sum it up, it would just be better communications.
So one of the, one of the things that, um, Mr. Shea and I and Superintendent Watson have spoken about is to have some kind of a Dartmouth Day. We had that idea pre-COVID and that got kind of sabotaged. And, um, but Mr. Shea and I have spoken about that again and we think that that would be a great time for the school committee, select board members, possibly some other, you know, the, uh, Greg Burns, people like that, so that they really understand more about the school. I think until you actually go into that environment, um, which I know you have quite a bit, Chris, it's hard to believe what actually goes on there and the service that they give back to the community, which I can talk about a little later. But, um, yeah, sort of a Dartmouth Day and we are going to revisit that.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I would just ask that perhaps you consider a Dartmouth evening for those of us who work and may not be able to make it. I know it's great to go in when the kids are there and whatnot. Um, but I know, I like y'all, but I'm not going to take a vacation day to go do that. So perhaps considering some options for those of us that are working that would allow us to go in an early evening or some sort of format like that would be great.
If I may, Chair, that, that's exactly what we did a number of years ago. We had a night event and we also had a Saturday morning one.
Perfect.
So it would definitely be part of the package to get everybody in. And the shops won't be open, but at least, you know, we, we have some honest society students that would come in on that Saturday morning to talk about their shops. So, so yes, we would consider that very much so.
That'd be great. All right, Ms. Wade?
No, I was just going to say, and I know we're going to, you know, probably lead right into this, but a lot of what we were talking about, the transparency and bringing folks into the school seems to be embedded in your admissions policy that you've updated, you know, and it seems to be, you know, as I go through, there's a lot of that discussion about having, you know, certain nights, going into different schools, going into meetings and really, you know, emphasizing that outreach. And then again, and I had that same kind of buzz that Chris, of what I saw. And, you know, there were some folks saying, you know, how do I, where's my representation with, with the vocational school? Where's that? They felt that gap. So I think all those efforts to increase communication for us, to increase your representation or your voices coming into our committee, but also engaging in the public, I think are going to be, uh, you know, really, there's a desire for that, um, need to be met within the community. And I think it's going to be well received. So, uh, you know, again, I'm, as I read through this, I know you're going to talk about this more. Um, it looks like that's already, you know, a clear part of your agenda, so, and plan moving forward. So, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Amaral, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, just not, not, just thank you for being there while I'm here in quarantine. Um, and, uh, no, I do have, when we get into the admissions policy, uh, I, I do have some questions. But just to thank you for being here to.
All right, so how do, how do we want to handle the admissions policy? Do you have questions about it, Mr. Nunes? Or would you like to hear what our reps have to say?
I, I just would like to hear a little bit about what changed, why the changes, that type of deal.
So I was on the admissions committee with the other representatives from the other towns and cities. And, um, I just want to ensure this committee that this was well researched. There were over 53 meetings that either the administration attended. A lot of those were through Zoom. Um, and then meetings that we were face-to-face for a good, um, three, four hours going through all this information. We also worked with a former DESI Associate Commissioner who was very, very good and really kind of shined the light on what some of the highlights should be of this and what maybe some of the changes would be. Um, we, one of the things that we looked at was where possibly would there be some gaps? And, um, And as Ms. Wade was saying, more outreach is definitely something that we've upped our game on. Not that we hadn't done it before, but even more so outreach to the community and also the Dartmouth Middle School, who has, they've been cooperative. They attended a breakfast over at our school, and it was very well accepted. The other thing is the gap with families that might not speak English as their first language. That was definitely a priority. Making information more accessible on the website. So events on the website, the admissions policies on the website, that kind of thing. So I know that you all have a packet that talks about this a bit. And I know Mr. Shea will help me with any kind of history questions because I don't have the prior history that he does at the school. But basically, there's five, we can accept, because of space, 565 students in the future. We have adapted the admissions policy a bit and the point system. So to let young people in that maybe, you know, should just be given a chance. So the scholarship, scholastic achievement, 24 points. And basically, this would be in the eighth grade. And between a seven, a grade of 75 and 100, they could get a potential of 24 points. 65 to 74, potential of 15. Moving, moving right ahead. Okay.
I passed out this today before you came. And I apologize not getting it to you earlier, but I was thinking about it. And once you get the mission policy going page five, it will show you what Dartmouth is saying. It will have the old points, new points. And just try, see how much of the expand that we went, because you know, to get the full point, you gotta get 95 to 100. Now we get 75 to 100, you get that. So we down it, the low gradient for more opportunities for students than our BRC students.
So then attendance is obviously important. Next page, very important to us. But we realize that, you know, things do come up, things do happen. It's divided between the seventh grade and the eighth grade. The seventh grade is worth seven points. And that could be up to nine absences, zero to nine absences, giving them a total of seven, okay? And then it falls down as expected. Eighth grade, 18 points. And they would, they could have zero to four absences and get 18, a full 18 points. Oh, based on a half a year, thank you. School behavior, we had, the committee had a lot of discussion about the fact that, you know, some, sometimes students are a little bit mischievous. And we don't wanna hold kids back from not being able to gain opportunities simply because they've been silly in class and they've got a very strict teacher and, you know, things have kinda gone on. So that was something that we were really going to look at a little bit closely. So number of suspensions, if there were no suspensions, it would be a total of five points. One suspension, 3.75. And that's in, at the seventh grade. At the eighth grade, zero would be, zero absence, zero suspensions would be worth 20 points. And it would go, one suspension is 15. Recommendation, now-
One comment on these, you look at the old, if, we use the word incidents. So that could be you written up because you came in class late. So you had five write-ups because five times you classed. So we changed the word incidents to take away the minor offenses. And they're using the word suspensions now. So I think that was a huge change because there were law kids that maybe never got suspended, but would get written up because of being silly in class, whatever. So that was a big step that Dr. Marlin was on that committee to say, no, that's gonna happen with kids. So it is suspensions now, not instances.
So we've opened up the local school recommendation. So basically, a student could have a guidance counselor, a teacher, someone affiliated with their middle school, do some sort of an evaluation with them. And we've actually got the criteria here so that, you know, a lot of these guidance counselors, towards the end of the year, they're kinda overwhelmed. But a percentage here, too. If a kid was excellent, that would be worth two points, average, below average. And so, and that would be based on study habits, personal responsibility, positive attitude, so on and so forth. So, so that's very condensed. But 500 students would come in during that process of this modified, yeah. And then 65 students would go into the lottery. And we feel that's something that we could track. We could start to see what, if there's any trends as far as, you know, the population that we're gonna be working with. Are there any gaps that we didn't think about previously that we could've worked on a little bit more? So the 65 would be within the lottery. And as I said before, all of this is in line with what the, what DESI is looking for. We worked pretty diligently on coming up with the process. So what else?
Just a few things before questions. The recommendation, the big thing that came out was guidance counselors were the only ones doing that. And the guidance counselor sometimes didn't know the whole kid. They saw the student in a different light. Now it could be one teacher that the kids did well in. It might be, you know, the secretary. It might be anybody within the school system that knows that child better. And I think it's a better rating system, to be very honest with you. So we'll do that. I think with the, this has been submitted as of December 17th to the Department of Education and DESI. And some schools have received theirs back with red highlights. In other words, please work on this area. We have not received ours back yet. We've heard it is looking good, but again, if it comes back next week with some areas, we will go back to the drawing board. And as Superintendent Watson has told us a number of times, we don't really have data on the way we did things in the past. So this is, I think, a big opening with grades, big opening with attendance, big opening with recommendations. It's not perfect. So we're gonna start tracking kids on how it works and how, how do you get in? And if you don't get into 500, every child that wants to is gonna get interviewed. There may be things in there that we didn't know about, that was not brought to our attention. So that will, then it'll come as part of the lottery. But we're learning this process, but it definitely opens up. More kids will be able to get into school, but we also have more applications. So, I mean, but more kids are gonna get higher points. I think that's it.
I like the changes. Questions, Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Shea, Dr. Marlin. Couple of questions, one just for curiosity. How many students apply every year, roughly?
I'm gonna say a number, then I'm gonna look over my shoulder and make sure I got it right. I say we have over 1,000?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, close to 1,000, sometimes 900 or-
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a lot.
Wow. Okay. Now, this admission policy is up at DESI, right? So all things being considered, if, you know, DESI sprinkles holy water on it, this will be go for next year. If they kick it back because they don't like the way this T is crossed or the I is dotted, does the old policy still come into play, or are you gonna use a hybrid?
This is for the class of 2026.
Okay.
So we expect that with the feedback now only in January, this will be ready to go for the coming, incoming freshman class.
Okay.
It does not affect the sophomores, juniors, or seniors. It's for class of 2026.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, Mr. Oliver?
Well, first of all, thank you both. I appreciate the slides as well as the explanation on things. Just a couple of points that I took away from this. I think looking, when you're looking at school behavior, I think that's, for some, many students, that may make a big difference based on the fact that, like you said, Mr. Shea, incidents versus suspensions. Because, you know, if that was the case, I, you know, myself, my after-schools or those things that, those write-ups, you know.
Can you expound on that, please?
No comment. Just to confirm though, for suspensions, are we referring to number of days? Are we referring to individual incidents for suspensions?
So it's, yes, it is, right, whether you get three days or five days, does not affect that. It's in, how many suspensions did you have?
Individual incidents of suspensions, okay. And that's great because when we're talking about transparency, that, that information is relayed to the Department of Education with the school safety discipline reports that the public can very simply just, just look up online if there's any questions around that. And then my last piece is, at the end of the day, when we're looking at, and also the recommendations, I think is great too. I think the way that has, that has been expanded on to not, because I'll tell you that my, you know, my daughters have had guidance counselors that they really don't know who they are, but they've had wonderful relationships with teachers. So I think that's huge. But as far as, so there's approximately, give or take, 1,000 applications each year. And then about 565 students are allowed in. Now, across the city and the two towns, I guess, I'm just trying to understand this. Is there any minimum of, say, New Bedford students that have to be enrolled? Any minimum of Dartmouth or Fairhaven students? Or it's, it's essentially, this is what, this is the admissions policy. It's based off this, you know, weighted criteria. And there's no minimum, like, that New Bedford should expect or Dartmouth should expect as far as just being equal, everything equal?
You, you're, there is no number. To give you a little history lesson, back in the 80s, it was 70% New Bedford, 15% Dartmouth, 15% Fairhaven. That was in the bylaws. Then at one point, DESI came out and said, you can't do that anymore. You're discriminating against other people. So this is for applications. You may have 200 kids from Dartmouth apply and get in. You might have 100 kids because of the numbers. So there is no number per district. Whoever falls into the point system is where the cutoff is. Right now, it's been very historically around 70 to 72% from New Bedford, year in, year out. I think right now, last year, I think Fairhaven was at 12-point something. Fairhaven was at 15.3, I think. So it's been close, but it will vary on the point system.
Okay. No, that, that makes sense, thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Because I think, you know, from our perspective, that can be a real challenge. The per pupil funding for Volk is significantly higher than what we have to spend per pupil. And when we have considerable fluctuations in the number of students from Dartmouth who are accepted to Volk, it, it's a problem for our budget. We have issues in the, in the, in the school and in the town because of those fluctuations. And I think that's been somewhat of a concern that, you know, when we have a bump of 20 students, I think your budget is maybe, I'm looking at Mr. Nunes because he knows stuff, like $5, $10,000 more per student. It's a significant amount of money for us. And so it can be a real challenge for our budget when we see the numbers going like this. Or in some years in particular, when we have a bump, right? It's like, how are we gonna, how are we gonna come up with that money? And we don't have a choice in that. And so I don't wanna say that we don't want Dartmouth students there, but that fluctuation is very difficult for us in terms of budgeting and planning when those fluctuations occur. And that's, I think, something that we need to, you know, continue to have open conversations about because it is a challenge for us with respect to our finances in managing those fluctuations. And, and I don't know what's possible, if there's some way to smooth that or what, but I'm looking at Dr. Gifford on this. It can be a challenge for our budgeting and our planning on the town side, but then ultimately, that comes back to us, right? I mean, it doesn't just come out of some magic money on the town side. We ultimately end up getting less. And so I think that's something that we need to communicate with and wrestle. Now that we don't have those percentages, how can we, how can we plan and smooth this out to make sure it doesn't come as a shock to the town's budget?
Well, those percentages have been there for, I mean, they've gone for, like I said, the 80s or early 90s. But, but I think it's been very, very consistent, except for a few years. I remember, you know, Dartmouth, you know, had less kids and they got more money, less money to pay us. And Fairhaven went up drastically. And now Fairhaven has gone down to 12%, more so than around 15. You know, so because their numbers are low. And more kids from a cushion it are going to Fairhaven, or they go to O'Callaghan Volk. So that cushioned number helps Fairhaven, but doesn't, doesn't come to us. So we understand that. It is a, the policy where we thought we originally had back when, 15, you know, 70%, 15, 50, everybody kinda configured that number. But the state said, no, you have to, you have to, and some people want a full lottery for us. And I think that's even more disastrous because that could have every, every kid that applied, no matter what, get in. And that would be, you wouldn't know that until like April. So I think, to be honest, it does fluctuate, and I understand John's concern, but very rarely will go like 15 to 18%. Or it'll go anywhere from like 16 to 13, around that area, at least to my knowledge. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can speak to that if you want.
Right, I guess, I guess my point is, is that even 1 to 2% is a-
Yes, we understand.
Is a big number for us, right? Because we don't have, the town's got low tax rates, so we don't have a lot of extra money. And so a small percentage fluctuation, right? 2% is 10 students, right? That's a big deal for us. So it's just, you know, maybe having communication about, about that and being aware of that would be helpful. Sorry, I interrupted you. You wanna-
No, I was actually just, I was done, but now I've got two more questions that just got raised.
Sorry.
That's all right. So I know that under municipal law, you know, Mr. Colley's not here tonight, but under municipal law, there's a lot, a special education stabilization fund is allowed. Is there any, anything under municipal law that would allow for the town or municipality to have a vocational stabilization fund?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking at the early-
I think you, I think you could because the town of Dartmouth has had, you know, they've put money, when they haven't had contracts settled. They've taken money and they've put it in a stabilization fund for future salary increases.
But that, would that be, would that be escrow? Like an escrow, like, or would that because-
Yeah, because in, in other words, if, you know, a contract isn't settled, or they don't anticipate a contract being settled by June 30th, okay?
Right.
They'll put money aside in the budget this year at the town meeting and say, we wanna put-
Sure.
So much money into a stabilization fund so that it's already, probably already been budgeted for this year.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna be spent. So what they wanna do is they wanna put it aside. They don't want it to fall out into free cash.
Right, no, I-
So they, so they put that in-
We have one of those.
They put that into a stabilization fund, and then they come back at, when the contracts get settled, they come back at town meeting and appropriate out of that.
But my understanding of stabilization funds is that town, it's gonna, town meeting has to approve the creation of a stabilization fund.
End of disbursement, yes.
But we have one of those, or we have a kindergarten stabilization fund that was created-
No, that's a revolving fund. Isn't that a revolving fund?
When we created kindergarten, there was a stabilization fund that was created. For just that express purpose, that when we created kindergarten- For just that express purpose, that when we created kindergarten, if, I think Mr. Watson's nodding his head because I think he was on the select one. But if by chance we weren't able to fund kindergarten for a year, the idea was the stabilization fund would be used for that. So that may be something that we can think about, looking at the data as a way to sort of smooth things out.
Just something to think about. And one, one last thing, and this is just from my own knowledge, is the vocational funding formula or financial, the portion that, and I know it's different between the city and Fairhaven and Dartmouth of what each municipality pays. But is it just with, is it individual to the regional district? Or is it across the, like, across the state? It's the same? Or every, every vocational school district has a different formula?
I'm not sure of that question, the answer.
No, that's, it's vocational funding is a, is a formula that's for all vocational schools. And it's based on, right, it's based on your mix of students. So if you've got more English learners or more people on IEP, so the formula is generic, but the calculations are based on the student population that, that enrolls.
But yeah, all right, that makes sense. So it actually, it takes into consideration, every regional vocational district takes into consideration those factors.
Yes.
Socioeconomic status, special education status.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Wade, do you have comments?
I just had more of a, kind of a question, too. And first, thank you for this. You know, and I have to echo what Mr. Oliver said. I do think that, you know, just the way it's been broken down, especially for the teacher recommendations, including the teachers, I think is, is going to be a game changer. So I appreciate that. I did, I'm just curious, you know, because I'm not as familiar with the process. When someone is applying to Voke, are they choosing, are they coming in with a specific shop? And is there a preference for students who have a higher point accumulation to get into a specific shop? So as part of the admissions process? So I've been curious, like, so if I have the highest, I'm, you know, I've gotten all, the most amount of points, why have a better chance of getting into this preferred shop?
It's all by, no, it's all by point system. And so if, before, the 90, 95 to 100 had higher points usually. So they, on the application, they, they ask you for six shops that you are interested in. We have an exploratory program, the first half year on the freshman year. Where they visit, I believe,
All of them.
15 shops. You know, they have a six week, six day.
Yep.
They go three day, three, then they go class. Three days, three days, class. And so we try to give everybody the top three choices. You know, most of the time it works, sometimes it may not. We try to give you four or five. But at the end of the exploratory program, the kids get marked, not on their talent, but on their effort and attitude within those three days. So even, you don't like welding and you don't, as long as you do your best, you score well. At the end of the half year, everybody, the point system goes from top to bottom. And we, what did that person want? Medical assistant. Next person, automotive. Next person. So we go down until shops are filled.
Okay. But those points, just for clarification, are accumulated at the half year. They, they don't have anything to do with these, this is completely separate. So everyone comes in basically undeclared to some degree.
Everybody that walks in is on the same playing field, day one.
Okay, thank you.
Right? Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Good, Ms. Amrell?
Thank you. Oh, I hear myself echoing. Can you hear me? Sorry, awkward. I'll just continue. So thank you for being here again. I know this, you know, came down from DSC and, but I want to, you know, thank you for your thoughtfulness and your, the way in which you've approached this. Really excited to see the weight, the weighing of the different criterias changing because, you know, historically, I think of students who, you know, have, you know, an underlying sort of a social, emotional need that may have during their middle school years developed into like a school refusal or a behavioral issue. I'm really interested to see and hopeful to see how that transfers into, you know, the students that you will, starting class of 2026, if DSC approves of your plan, how that works out. And I'm a little far removed from the day-to-day with families, but that was something that I would hear often is, you know, students who did have issue with school refusal, who based on their anxieties and mental health challenges that, that translated into them having less of a chance to enter the trade school. And such a shame because as we've witnessed in our own middle school, when we engage students in a way that meets their, their level of excitement to, in their engage in a way that, you know, students who wouldn't be the ones to stand in front of the room to, you know, read or raise their hand to be the first one to answer a question, when they're allowed to do a project that involves using their musical or their artistic talent, it's incredible the things that we've seen as a school committee be brought in front of us. So I see that as a, a wonderful sort of hopeful. Hopefully you'll see that, too, that those, you know, those missing class or those unexplainable, unexplained absences, if it's scoring lower, it's less apt to kind of preclude them from being accepted. And I'm excited to see, hopefully, that those students who then engage in the, in the trade school, a place where they are going to find some, their niche and really excel, how that's going to work out in the fruit of that change, I look forward to seeing. And that's all. I just appreciate all the work and dedication that you put into this document and I'm grateful for it.
Thank you, Ms. Amrell. So, you know, I'll just say, I'm very appreciative that you have made the move towards being more open to students, right? To lowering sort of academic performance. Because, you know, I teach at a university, but I really firmly believe in vocational education that for so many students, it's a real path to the middle class. And I see a lot in Dartmouth sometimes. I know Mr. Noon says stay off Facebook, but I'm still going to say on social media, right? That people say, oh, I'm going to send my kid to Voke because it's a leg up in college. Now, every kid who goes to Voke should have the opportunity to go to college, period. But at the same point in time, I have been deeply worried that that mentality is crowding out students who are not engaged in a traditional educational setting. And so they don't perform well in middle school. And they're being shut out by kids who are doing this because they want to get, you know, a better chance to get into college instead of, you know, going and pursuing a trade. So I'm, I'm very grateful that you've made these changes. Personally, I would have preferred even more of those changes. That's just sort of my MO. I am happy to see that you are doing the lottery. It would be my hope that you are able to expand the lottery. Ideally, I would like to see a floor that you have to meet these to get in. And then once you meet that floor, it is a lottery. That would be my preferred system. We're not there yet, my preferences, I don't, I don't get a vote on that. But I want to say I'm super glad that you have put in that lottery and that you do plan to evaluate that. I will also say this. I hope that the evaluation is not, well, they don't do as well, so we can't do the lottery anymore. I hope that as teachers and educators, our concern is, these kids are getting in and we're not doing right by them, so how do we do better, right? That, that we don't do away with that lottery, that we hopefully expand it and we figure out ways to give everyone access to vocational education, particularly for those students for whom college is not the right choice. And so I'm just, I really, I really believe in what you all do. And I just want to make sure that we're serving the students, really serving the students who would fully benefit from a vocational education. And so, you know, I think one of the things that we've talked about tonight is partnership. Like, we want to work in partnership with you. And so I hope we continue to keep these lines of communication open. And we will invite you back on other occasions to have conversations. I think this has been good, though. So thank you.
And just to end it, I want to thank you again. And again, Cindy was more involved with the submission policy than I was. She was representative on that. So kudos to her for many, many, many long hours beyond what the meetings are. And also, any members of committee, you know, can, if there's something you have questions, please call me. Or please call Dr. Marlin. Because a lot of times, if we pick up something as school committee members, you know, we can act on it before it becomes an issue. So, you know, we're glad to listen. We may not always agree, but that's okay. We'll just, we'll listen and move forward. And again, the last thing is that, you know, Cindy and I were talking, as school committee members, it's been a tough two years, you know, with all the teachers and everything. And just, our, both of us, hats off to you guys for the job you do and keeping it going. You know, I talked to Dr. Gifford a number of times. And again, what she does is for all the teachers in Dartmouth, it's been a crazy, crazy few years, but I hear good things coming out of Dartmouth. Keep my ears to it. I got a little connection here, so. So I just want to say thank you to you guys for what you do, every day.
Thank you, Mr. Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, Dr. Marlin. Mr. Watson, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Appreciate your time.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is the 22, 23 school calendar. Dr. Gifford, is there anything you want to say here? I mean, I think it's a pretty standard calendar.
Yeah, it's pretty standard, so take a peek. And this will be the first read on that.
If there are any questions about the calendar.
No, I'm just glad to see that, I'd like to see that the second, that Monday, I'm glad that that Monday is, is off. I think that's important for, you know, kids to recover, everybody to recover and have a day to travel if you're seeing family.
Yep.
So I'm glad to see that.
Well, New Year's Day is a Sunday anyway, so that makes it a Monday holiday.
Yeah. Yeah. But even still, I would hope that we
Helpful.
We try to, we try to maintain that.
Because that hasn't always been the case, where in some cases, they've gone back on the second, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and we, we changed that recently. And I, and I would like to, I think we'd like to keep it. I think we're all in agreement that, to Mary's point, it does allow the students to recover and everyone come in for the first day of January while rested and ready to go. Other questions or comments? We don't need a motion on this. She said it's the first read, right? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the MASC resolution that we're going to skip. It's fine, we haven't gotten the wording to that yet. We're all very busy, we get that, we'll come back around to that one. So the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's update.
Sure. So I have a couple of things, obviously. So some fun things that are happening. Just wanted to let you know that Cushman has received another $2,000 from the Feinstein Foundation. So they're keeping that, that going. This is about their kindness tree, which they have hanging and then the little suggestions that kiddos can put up, how they help out, how they're kind. And one sample that was sent to me was, you know, helping mom and dad with their groceries and things like that. So as you know, the Feinstein Foundation's basic premise is just to really instill in kids the power of kindness. So our Cushman School is continuing that and is one of the top schools. So they're working hard at it, so that's good. Our sale program kicked off and we have 16 unique sessions that are being offered by teachers across the elementary schools. And our Cushman students are bussed to DeMello to partake in that. And the sessions were self-selected by the teachers, were invited to propose something they would like to offer, whatever it might be. Robotics or knitting, I mean, whatever it might be that the teacher had interest in. So that just kicked off recently as well. We're working right now on our pre-K and K registration details, so we'll be getting information out on that soon. It'll be time for folks to get their kiddos registered. Of course, we always like our kindergarten to register as soon as possible. So as we move into budget season and we're looking at staffing and sections at the schools, it's important to know our incoming students. You mentioned the audits, et cetera. So we're continuing to gather documents in preparation for that. We haven't received any further details as far as dates or any of that yet, but we're working on accumulating the documents needed for that. Mr. Kylie and I have been scheduling budgeting meetings. Those, you know, as you know, he's been out ill, so. But we're looking forward to hopefully starting those this week with our principals and our department heads. Everybody has submitted their budgets, their preliminary budget requests. So now we'll be meeting with all of them individually to discuss their requests. And this Wednesday is an early release day. And once again, we're continuing the Master Teacher Platform that we used last year that received a lot of good feedback from teachers. It's self-selected. So they, numerous, numerous choices of professional development and then they can accumulate 10 PDPs to help with their recertifications. And also this year, our ITS teachers have developed a platform with technology, really aligning what our existing platforms are, helping people hone their skills on things we're already using. So they've offered that out as well. And again, people can self-select what PD they'll be attending. And along the ITS teams, ITS people, we're also assembling teams that's going to continue to support, you know, as we had the one-year position this year, helping integrate and create units that various content areas can integrate the technology, digital technology standards into the curriculum. So we have teams being assembled that we're going to be helping create, create those units, et cetera. So we've been doing a lot of work with the elementary, but we're expanding it to the secondary level a little bit more. And then as you, as I told you last week, we did pause our athletic for the week, continuing to monitor that. Our intent is to restart that tomorrow with practices. We really, as you heard Evan say, hockey has a game this weekend. So we're hoping that that works out well. It's at Gillette Stadium. But with the five-day comeback with the new guidance, that's helpful as well to get folks back in, whether it's teachers, coaches, students, athletes, whatever it might be. So I did talk to Andy Crisafulli today. As a matter of fact, he just texted me something. I haven't had a chance to see it. Probably a letter that he's sending to the parents about updates on various things. The MIAA did take a vote to limit fans for two per student with the indoor, anything on our facility. So he's working on deciding how to, how to go about that and what we'll do to start off.
I'm sorry, I just missed that. Could you just repeat what you just said? I'm sorry, to limit what?
Two per student, two per athlete, just to start off. The MIAA voted.
Fans, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's smart, yeah.
So he'll be looking into that. No decision here of how that's working right now. But as I said, he's, he's really on top of communicating with parents on what the changes are. And as we continue to let people know, too, if a student athlete is positive with COVID this, they are required to bring a medical clearance from their, their doctor as well, just to be able to re-participate. So it's not just the coming back of COVID, but it's their doctor clearance as well. As you know, there's issues with, issues with kiddos that are then coming back to play, that we want to be extra careful about that. So we'll continue, that's a monitoring every day. So, we'll continue, that's a monitoring every day. We said it again, it's fluid and flexible. If something happens that we can't, then, then we pause. Let's see. Of course, I've resent information to parents last week about reminding them, do not send kids to school sick. We did have an issue here at the high school. It was becoming quite evident that people were coming off the bus to use the nurse's office as a testing program, and it's, I just keep saying, it's not okay. You know, it overburdens our personnel, our resources, et cetera. So, I can't stop giving kudos to the nursing department that's working way over time to help out, and of course, our extra people, our partners with the STAT ambulance, they've been here pretty much every day, at the high school especially. But, but it's, but it was better today, so that's, that's good news, I guess. And as you know, the DESI did update the guidance last week. We, we decided to hold off for a week to get everybody used to things, bring our nurses back from the holiday break and get used to it, and we are, we have now implemented it as of today, so people that have tested positive can return on day six, seeing that they have 24 hours at least with no fever and symptoms, improved symptoms. We have had folks that luckily, they, you know, I'm still not feeling that great, they don't come back. So, that's what we want to encourage, that it's okay to come back when you're feeling well, but by all means, don't, don't come back if you're not. So, let me see. I think that's about it on my, and then absences, you mentioned, as I said, we had fewer today. We've had, we've had some in the past, even without COVID, to tell you the truth, but last week, when I sent you that email, it was one of our biggest, obviously, nervous times, if you will, a little bit anxious, how can we, can we manage the district? But we were able to pull it off. We've stopped into all the schools, between all of us, and sent, as I said, secretaries around and helping out, and it worked. So, we're okay for now. We're okay for now. But today's absences were much less than last week, so we're happy to hear that. But of course, we've just come off another long weekend, if you will, so we'll see what happens.
Are you, is that both staff and students?
Yes, 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 yes. I'm trying to look for that data I just had today. And the one thing we are looking at, I'm looking at the drive for the positive cases. As I think I told you last week, for the week, we've reported 269 positive students and 44 staff members. And since last Thursday, I hate to give the numbers out, but it's all public. Oh, goodness. Yeah. 695, 200, probably up another 120 or so. So, so we'll see what happens, but we, as you know, we watch it every day, so school's functioning. Obviously, it's difficult for everybody at this point, but that's it.
Questions? Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I, I just have a couple of questions on what you presented, Dr. Gifford. I guess I'll, I'll start with, since we were just talking about COVID.
Right.
I guess, I guess we'll start with that. So, are there any, and I know everything's fluid.
Right.
Are there any, like, even rough metrics in place as to COVID numbers in specific, whether it's classrooms, whether it's after-school programs or sports, I guess, that the district or your office will, in consultation with DESI, would be like, all right, maybe we need to look into closing this classroom down? Because I, I know that remote learning days has, the DESI has made it clear that, you know, that's not counted towards time on learning, right? So, but are there any, and I know it's on a case-by-case, my understanding is that it's on a case-by-case scenario in which the school districts have to have conversations. I guess there's a point of contact at DESI, right, that, that you're able to speak to. Has there been any close encounters with that? Because I don't, as a school, I, I know that you're always good with keeping us up to date, that, that there hasn't, to date, there hasn't been any closures of classrooms or anything, but has there been any close calls? How, how is the district looking at those numbers, like, if it's a specific classroom, like, well, there's, there's five students out of, say, 19 out, that's a concern, we really need to, we need to make that phone call to DESI?
Yeah. I actually did call DESI last week, but it was really a concern more of, because I had spoken with the principals of staffing, we were concerned of the next day, whether we were going to be able to maintain one of the schools, anyway, but their answer, of course, was you would have to call a snow day, a no-school day, and no remote, and to call them with any other, they can't help, but they pretend they can help, right? But I guess to your, to your question, really, it's the ongoing conversations with, I can't say it, Mr. Mishu, again, when we have those kinds of questions, or we meet with our nurses, and so we haven't really had that instance where we're fearful about the whole class. And I think why, really, that's helpful is because of the exemptions with the vaccination status for testing, but also that we do have the test and stay, so that we're able to continue to monitor those kids, even if it was, say, a five kids out of a 20 class or something, 20-student class, that we're able to, to monitor that on a daily basis. I think that's, if we didn't have that in place, I think then we'd be more fearful and make that decision to, which we did last year, if you recall, especially when we had our smaller group programming kiddos, and a couple of times, we had to do that. So, with the test and stay, as much as it's a lot of work, I think it's just very helpful that we're able to keep everybody that we can functioning and in school.
Absolutely. No, I certainly agree with you. And then my other question, a follow-up to that, is with the test and stay program, are, are we keeping track of? I'd be really curious to know how many tests and stay, how many tests have been administered, and then how many, how many positives? How, you know, is it, obviously, it's worthwhile, right, but how many positives it's found?
Yep. I, I, I wouldn't be able to give that to you tonight.
Sure, no, that's fine.
But I, we do have that data, so we keep a big spreadsheet, not only on the positives completely. The nurses put it in every single day, and we have access to it. It's a Google Drive, of course. And we also have a spreadsheet that, by each school, all the test and stays, and they'll, they'll map it out, whatever the, if it was a 10-day, a 5-day, whatever it might be, and then they put whether it was negative, the kid was absent, so they're keeping really good records on that. Do we have some, sometimes that pop positive? Yes. As a matter of fact, today at the high school, we did. So, some that came down for it and came out positive. So, again, thankfully, we have that, because so often, it's asymptomatic. So, we do have that data. It's just too complex to speak to tonight.
Yeah, no, and I, I didn't ask ahead of time, so no, no problem, but as you were talking, I was like, I was just, I'm just curious.
Yeah, yeah, but it's there. Yeah, absolutely. And I, and I just want to mention Lori Jodwin, who's our Assistant Special Education Administrator, because she, when she was hired, one of her duties was supervising the nursing department, and I don't think she really knew what's going to come to this, but for the last two years, she's just, it's daily, daily, daily. She and I obviously communicate daily. We're in each other's office all the time because of this, and she's on the phones or texting with the nurses, with Mr. Mishu, with Ryan from STAT, and does, you know, inventory with the testing kits, we just had to order more, how many test and stays we have for the next day, do we need Ryan, do we need somebody else to help out, et cetera. So, she's, I just want to commend her for the work she's done, not only with her other district work and all the other things that she's working on, but this is, obviously, as you know, has taken a lot of time, so I just, I just wanted to commend her publicly.
No, I, thank you for that, absolutely, and, you know, I'll echo that. Just being in education myself, it, it's just, it's a monumental task what the, what the districts are being asked to do right now. And, and we're pulling together, and, you know, for the most part, people are doing it with a smile on their face. It's constantly changing, it's constantly being fluid, so I, I do have to send a huge shout-out, a huge thank you to, you know, starting with you, Dr. Gifford, and everyone, especially our educators, our faculty, our staff, our, our teaching assistants, everyone.
True.
It is, there's, I'm, you know, there's certainly a lot of concern with, with burnout, right? And I won't get into it, but I read a, a really good article in Forbes over the weekend about, there's a, you know, there's certainly some things to be concerned of in the future.
Yeah, I agree.
In the near future with what's happening.
Yeah.
And I'll just leave with this. In regards to the ITS position that was created, Trish Leary, I believe, being on assignment this year, how, how is that? Because I know that was created, I believe, with SRFunds.
Right.
How's that going? Are we going to be able to see something in the future as to what we're doing with that?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's going fantastic. She's fit right in and doing a great job, and she, I know, for example, one thing, she came over here at the high school, you know, an elementary teacher kind of coming into the secondary level was like, hmm, but I remember having a conversation with her that people were so happy, she fit right in, and is helpful, and is the great personality for that work, and really knows her stuff, of course.
Absolutely.
So, we'll have, you know, we'll, we'll have to check in later as the year goes on and see what the product about how that integration is going on, and what, what's in Rubicon Atlas and our curriculum and all of that. So, yeah, we're happy to have it.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Wade, do you have any questions?
Not, not per se. I guess, well, I would say the one thing I am curious about, as, you know, we kind of saw that it was, the boosters were opened up last week to, you know, another population, the 12 to 16-year-olds. And as I think about the students who are coming in and they're having the test and stay, how do the nurses know those students who are, I mean, is it, you know, are, do they have access to those records and know that these students are vaccinated, or are they, because I know in our case, you know, our students, it's on their medical records, but I don't know if it's on everyone's. Like, how do they, are they taking parents' words for it? Like, how, and are we seeing an increasing number of students who are vaccinated, so less actually have to go through the test and stay program? I mean, there's a couple of different things there, but I'm just, I'm curious to know how that actually works.
Yeah. I think most of the time, the parents are just very forthcoming with the nurses, you know, they have submitted the cards, or whatever it might be, for the vaccinations, and I, I'm, I'm actually surprised sometimes at the number that aren't, that so don't, you know, or either they aren't, so they are in the test and stay, or that they refuse the test and stay, too. Sometimes I'm surprised at that. So, there's no rhyme or reason, I think, there's no trend that I could say, you know, this so many is, is our intestines day or vaccinated, it's, sometimes I'm just surprised by what I hear each day. Yeah, yeah.
And well, there's students who are, and then, you know, as we think about the vaccinations increasing, then needing the booster, will that then, will we get to a point, and this maybe is a probably a question for Chris, but will we need to have, make sure that if you've been exposed, will we get to a point where you also have had to have a booster, or you have to go through test and stay? Because, again, right now, we're saying if you're vaccinated, but, you know, how much is the vaccine, you know, how long are we to count vaccination status without a booster, like, to support it? So.
Yeah, because the definition for the vax is still, at first, we thought they were going to include the booster, and we were like, oh, my goodness, that's going to do a job on our intestines day, but they didn't. So, I don't know. I don't know.
All right. You know, according to data, you know, from the CBS, the 5 to 11-year-old in Dartmouth, it's 17% are vaccinated, and 12 to 15-year-olds is 56%. Our, our rates are really low.
Yeah, but that doesn't include the booster of those 12, you know, and again, I know that was just available last week, so, yeah, it is, it is very low, but I just, I was curious, but I did want to echo what Mr. Oliver said, that, you know, I just thought for this past week, I mean, my, just, you know, whether I was at, you know, any doctor's office, Hawthorne, I know they're overwrought, you know, and just overwhelmed, and have, and then have serious teachers, too, last week, I just, you know, and yet, we were receiving emails from the teachers saying, what can I do to support your children who are in court? I have to give them so much credit, because they're doing, going above and beyond, and really trying to keep these, you know, in a personalized way to, to reach out to students who are quarantined, or doing this and that, and it's just, and having different students coming in and out, and the amount of work that that creates, and, you know, to your point about burnout, I just, you know, and staying positive in that, that energy, it's, it's, it's a lot on us, so.
It is.
So, I'm really appreciative of all the leadership and everything else, but I'm aware, you know, again, that there, you know, as Dr. Jenkins has said again and again, that there's going to be some, you know, fallout.
Right. Each day, we just say another day, you know.
I know.
Going forward, how's everybody doing? And as long as we can cover the classes and keep it going.
Ms. Ammaral, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. Thank you for that information, Dr. Gifford.
I will just echo my colleagues, you know, going, moving on to the report of the chair and saying, thank you. It's been, it's been rough, and, you know, every time we think we're out of the woods, something new comes along. So, I can remember that brief shining moment in, what was it, July? We had Mr. Mishu, and we were like, enjoy your vacation! Right? Oh, it's going to be great.
Well, as you might know, Friday's snow call was the easiest snow call we ever made. Not even a, as a snowflake, cancel school.
And then it was so early, that was another thing, everyone was so grateful.
It was great.
They could just have that mental break, too, not wondering, so thank you.
Sent from heaven, I guess.
I mean, I was out, and I happened to have WBC radio on at noon time, and they had already, she had already, the superintendent had already, or the mayor, I'm sorry, my fault. The mayor had closed schools in Boston at noon time for Friday. It was like.
We were just fearful, we weren't going to have staff.
Yeah, no. Dartmouth was one of the earliest in the area to call.
Yeah, like, done.
I'll tell you, the middle schoolers ran out, and I was waiting in the middle school, and they were like, yeah! Because they had just announced it as they were leaving, so they were, it was just this, like, joyful.
It was. Put a smile on our face.
It was great, it was good, so thank you.
It was a good move.
So, the only thing that I'm going to add, as my report of the chair, is that about the Dartmouth Education Foundation Spelling Bee, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to move forward with it. It's not until March, so we got some time, hopefully, for things to calm down. It's Thursday, March 24th, from 7:00 to 9:00 here at the high school. The flyer went out to all the principals about putting in teams, and I'll remember first-in, early flight for getting your teams in. And you can go to dartmoutheducationfoundation.org for information about donating to the Spelling Bee, and also for putting a team in. The last thing on our agenda is the other matters that might not have been anticipated at time agenda posting. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? Mr. Nunes, let's go with you.
I have, yeah, Evan took one of mine, which was fine, about the fall sports teams, you know, in the standard times, but also, over the next couple of weeks, our DECA students are going to be competing, again, virtual this year, that was supposed to be live in person tomorrow. I was all set to go to Anderson judge, but got an email middle of last week that they decided to go virtual, so they're just revamping everything and such. So, I know we, we're going to have a bunch of students in the different categories, and, you know, it's always an honor and a privilege to, to do, not only see our students, but students from everywhere other, all the other area schools, and it's something that I enjoy, so I'm looking forward to it, but I mean, there, you know, good luck to our students as they move forward with this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Anyone else? Mr. Oliver?
I would just ask that, I know we've done it in the past, I don't think we've done it the past couple of years, but in regard to the Spelling Bee, I know we've, we've sponsored teams before, so I'll throw it out there that I would be more than happy to, with my colleagues, sponsor a team.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That's fine, I'm good with that.
Just as long as we don't have to spell. I think one year we spelled.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, let's not go to...
That was the year that the final was the school committee versus the finance committee, and the school committee won. I was on the finance committee then, and I was like, oh, you made it to the finals? And I was like, yes, because the woman, Lisa, I can't remember Lisa's last name, was an English, she was an English teacher. It's like, it was all her. It was all her, not me. Spelling is not my forte. So, as long as we don't put together a team, we sponsor a team.
Yes.
I agree.
Perfectly okay with that.
I'm good with that.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone?
Yeah, just one last thing would be, you know, I think it would be, it's just important that, whether it's the next school committee meeting or the following one, I'd really like to see it coming up on the agenda, the Dartmouth Indian, and the, you know, where we're at with, with all of that.
That was on me. I have had a difficult fall semester dealing with all of this sort of stuff, and so it's on me to move that forward, and I can, there hasn't been much to report, so we'll see where we are. But, yeah, I've had a, I've had a lot on my plate, as we all have, and so that has fallen away by the wayside.
Be fine.[1713.25]